Don't have a form.
No, we do.
And we do.
We're now, yeah, five present.
Okay, they're just not showing on the screen.
Nope.
I see Mr. Jones' chance. Okay.
I spoke with Jennifer in earlier and she's is coming, so.
Okay. Go ahead and call the role. Please indicate your physical location when I read your name. Councilmember Will Coxson.
Present, Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Present, Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Somerville.
Present, Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Mayor Richardson.
City of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Morgan. I'll come back. So, Councilmember Morgan.
It looks like his audio is trying to connect.
Are they calling a roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Present.
And state your physical location, please.
Oh, Ypsilanti, Michigan, County of Washtenaw.
Councilmember Simmons. Mr. Jones' chance.
Present, City of Ypsilanti, County of Washtenaw.
With six present, one absent, there is a court.
I move to excuse Jennifer Simmons until she arrives.
That's correct.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hi.
She's here. She's logging on now.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Simmons, could you announce your physical location, please?
Yep, um, County of Washtenaw, City of Ypsilanti, attending virtually.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was having trouble.
Council, next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Thank you. The ayes have it.
Council, moving on to the next section, public comments. Any member of the public that wishes to address council will have three minutes to do so. You'll need to raise your hand. I'm giving you a moment to do that. Council, seeing that no one has raised their hand on the attendees list, we can move forward with the agenda. The next section is the appeal hearings.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The next section is the appeal hearings.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Barr did provide counsel a memo on how to proceed. You can go ahead and read that real quick. The first would be calling of the case by the mayor, second reports of the staff, third petitioner's presentation, fourth counsel questions to petitioner, five rebuttal of staff, six final remarks of petitioner, seven closing of hearing discussion, motion and decision.
Okay, we will proceed.
Mayor, for the purpose of you calling the case, the first case is the worst license LLC.
Okay, we'd like to call the worst case. Do we ask for a presentation from the worst owner? Is that how we go?
The the next step will be reports of staff. And the report being given is the worst bar is located or the appellate's proposed location was 705 West Pro Street. A denial letter was sent to them on June 29th, 21. City staff received their appeal on July 27th, 2021 at 12:55 PM. And then the next step would be petitioner's presentation.
All right, thank you. Mr. Crane, would you please state your case? Thank you.
Yes, Mayor. Hello, everybody. I know I've spoken to most of you regarding this, so I'll try to keep it brief. I think that the next group up also has the same basic argument. As you all know, I applied for the license as laid out on the city website. And it stated in that application that this point system would be based out of 190 points and that whoever scored the highest rubric on the application would be awarded the first license. It says it there. It says in several emails I've had with staff that the point rubric will be based on the metric on the application. Nowhere, anywhere before this process is there this these extra points given from the city manager's office. They're in addition to, and they came after we submitted our applications. That's basically the gist of it. I did score the highest of all the applications. And when they supplemented the point system, it dropped us down below the top three. So I guess my first complaint is that, you know, this process was definitely not transparent. Goes against due diligence or due process. I don't think that it's legal and it's definitely not fair. I would never have submitted an application had I known there was this hidden rubric. I don't think many people would have. This isn't an amount of money that I would have risked not knowing what this mysterious, you know, 50, 60 point bonus was that you could get for doing whatever. A lot of these businesses that do to the business that did win, they purchased their properties before the application were even in, you know, they're coming from out of our city. And this is a social equity license. You know, how how are we getting multimillion dollar companies coming in and getting these extra points just because they're picking up blighted properties? I mean, I think it's, I think it's scandalous, to be honest. And, you know, it's costing me a lot of money to get this far. And that's it. That's my case.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, if I could add, I'm I'm Jesse's attorney, Jonathan Schwartz, and my partner, Mark Kowalski, on the phone as well. What we're here today for is to try to come to some agreement so that Jesse is rewarded for his hard work, his effort.
You're muted.
You accidentally muted yourself.
I'm sorry, I muted myself. I don't know what point I cut off, but I'm Jonathan Schwartz. I have Mark Kowalski, my partner from the Jaffe Law Firm, on the phone as well. We are here today because we want to find some kind of amicable resolution. Jesse has gone over and above. He was the highest point scorer. He spent a lot of time, money, and effort, and he cares about this very much. To lose out based on an unpublished set of standards that were not approved, but were just, you know, kind of revealed after the fact seems very unfair. There's certainly a range of legal issues that are now caused, and I know that the next applicant is going to raise some of those specifically. But what we'd like to do is come to some kind of resolution where we could move past this, where Jesse could receive the permit that he's entitled to, and we can avoid a more prolonged dispute. So we appreciate everybody's time and attention today, but we would seriously request that the appeal that the appeal overturn the prior decision, which we think was erroneous and legally deficient on a number of bases.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Is there anyone else to speak on Jesse's case?
I don't have anybody else, no.
Council, the next step would be for counsel to question the petitioner.
Do any council members, Councilmember Somerville?
Yeah, I just want to say I don't have any questions. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I got a question.
Mr. Wilcoxon, did you have your hand up?
No, I was just agreeing. That is fairly straightforward.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Morgan has a question.
Okay, I can't see you, Mr. Morgan, but please ask your question.
How you doing, Mr. Crane?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. I appreciate you giving me a call and and explaining what was going on with you. I got a question. With the state of Michigan states as the social equity program, what does social equity mean to you according to this program?
Well, I mean, according to the program, social equity just means that you live in in a community like Ypsilanti. That's as far as this.
What do you mean by that? What do you mean? According according to the definition of the social equity program, explain that for me.
An area that's been negatively impacted by the war on drugs.
Okay. And so was the was it was it was it stated to you before you apply that the scoring would be made public?
Yes.
Okay. Um. In my, okay, because I think about what the social equity, the social equity program is and what is intended to be and what it could be. And like you just said, I do think when I was sitting in Lansing, because I I empathize, and like your lawyer said, you did put a lot of work, hard, no effort and risk, right? But that's what business owners do, right? There's no guarantee. And I don't think there was a guarantee that of the city manager who made some adjustments that her job is to determine what social equity is, because the state of Michigan has a very broad definition of it. And so the staff and the city manager are taxed with interpreting social equity. But according to how it was written, you're right, it does say the medical industry, the participation in the industry, the communities that have been disproportionately impacted by marijuana prohibition and enforcement and to positively impact those communities. I don't think that's what this does. So but I do think fairness is what we're looking for. So I'm listening. I know it should be cut and dry. I do think the state has a very sparse, unclear ideal of what social equity is, and I think cities determine it better than the state. The state has a very ineffective way of enforcing social equity, which is why the numbers are still representing the medical and recreational. So I think as it's written, I don't think it was meant intended to be, um, I don't know if you can see me. I don't know if it's intended to do what many people think it's supposed to do. Um, so I think that's one thing. And I think, like you say, with some of the rubrics, I don't think a lot of things that people intend, I think people intended for the social equity program to to help some of the people that are in those communities, and you may, and you're one of them. And so I think it's a lot of unclear things, and I'm sorry that you get that you're affected by one of these things. I'm listening intently. Um, I would like to know what the staff thought about the first, when you when you presented, did the staff give you any input that why certain things were changed?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Yeah, I know. I just, I did write the city manager after, you know, we got denied because I was very surprised I was denied. I was fairly confident in my application. I wrote it and my partner at worst bar is the property owner, and we went, you know, we looked through this in great detail, and I know everything is a risk. But you mitigate risk with research. And after we had done our, you know, our legwork, I was fairly confident in the score, and part of the scoring rubric was community benefits, which is outlined in the the, what is it? The, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting words here in the I'm looking for it here on the it was outlined in the original general provisions on the Ypsilanti code.
Okay.
As, you know, being that that portion, it was worth, I think, 15 points, and they were going to be ranked, you know. So as far as community benefits goes, it says right in the application that that's the community benefit section.
Okay.
Only section I was unsure of. So I was like, all right, well, you know, have a pretty solid plan as far as that goes, and nobody said anything about Ypsilanti had a different idea of what social equity was. You know, there was nothing, so I only had the stink, you know, information to go off of. And it was never defined anywhere further in the application except for on that, you know, that little paragraph there that was for those 15 points. You know, it was a very big surprise to me that there was this whole other section about beautification and all kinds of things that have to do with land and blight.
Do you feel like?
Was this 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 plan was a pivot for worst part in our employees, you know? I'm fighting to keep our our business going between COVID and everybody else, this negative affected us. We had to put all of our money into the outdoor seating and back just to compete. And then now the streets closed and they've been doing construction for months on end over here, and it's not going to end until October. I mean, we've been getting wrecked as a business.
Okay.
Try to, you know, save ourselves.
Do you feel you deserve to be number one over all the applicants that were that applied?
You know, I feel like the social equity part of this is, if you want me to be frank with you, I think it's kind of silly. You have to have what? One of the points was you had to have a million dollars in assets. You know, if this is a social equity, if it's really social equity, you're in, you're trying to service an underserved communities, these people, people are not going to have a million dollars in the bank. Why would you get extra points for that? You know, it's crazy to me. But that's not what what I, you know, what I applied for was what was on the application. So I don't know the other people, but I do know that I scored higher than them. So.
Can I, can I just, can I just make a comment right now? Sorry to interrupt this line of questioning, but I really don't think that what Mr. Koenig thinks about, he's not the one who's evaluating the process, and it's it's about what was our process fair? As it was stated to him, I think he's made his case. And so to me, what we're supposed to be evaluating is what we did, not what he thinks or what, you know, what he he did. So whether or not, you know, he thinks he deserves to be number one, I mean, everyone thinks they deserve to be number one. I don't care what it is. Maybe he doesn't, but that's not, no, with no disrespect. If, you know, I'm not sure that that's pertinent. I mean, was our process fair and equitable? We changed it midstream. And to me, that's what the issue is. And so I don't really, I have to be honest, I don't understand why we're asking these, this line of questioning doesn't quite make sense.
Well, no offense, I'm asking these lines of questioning and not not anyone else. And when it's someone else's turn, they can ask whatever they want. I'm sorry, Mr. Crane, if this makes anybody uncomfortable. I'm almost done.
Jennifer, I do appreciate it, but Anthony, I do understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with you. But, you know, that, but, you know, like Jennifer did state, it's not what I applied for. I've had a problem with, you know, my politics are completely against the war on drugs. They always have been. War in general, you know, I just, there's a lot of things I disagree with, and, you know, that's not, I don't think that has to do with this specific matter.
I appreciate you.
Lanny had went about this all differently, and if you really wanted to benefit certain things, it just should have been laid out in the beginning. And, you know, maybe I wouldn't have applied.
Well, I really appreciate you looking to extend your business here in the city of Ypsilanti. I have no further questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Somerville.
I'm going to be really brief, but just for like, just to rebuttal something. We knew what we couldn't do with social equity because Michigan is an anti-affirmative action state. We are the only city that attempted to actually have a social equity program, and the only power we actually had was holding those social equity permits until you didn't have to have both a medical and a recreational. So we did make several attempts to make this about social equity. But again, that's not why we're here. And the million dollar capital requirement was something that everybody that was on council at the time was okay with because I spoke out against that, and I said that that was not a good thing. So and I think maybe Lois at the time agreed with me, but the former mayor did not, and that was how that happened. So I, we tried everything that we could to make this about social equity.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, there was a comment about, you know, the city manager kind of setting.
Councilperson Simmons.
I apologize.
Mr. Jones' chance has his hand up. I'll come back to you.
No problem.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had a quick question that will determine, I guess, my questioning here. And maybe this is a question for Mr. Barr, but is it possible for us to simply add two additional licenses? I can be for anyone on staff, I guess.
Well, let's wait for Mr. Barr. I don't know if he heard you.
Yes, I did hear the question, Your Honor, and I was waiting to be called on, but the simple answer to the question is yes.
In that case, I don't have any questions.
All right, Councilwoman Simmons.
I think just a reminder too, because there was a comment that was made about the city manager setting policy, but city council is who sets that, and then staff, you know, so that that, you know, and anyway, so just just kind of a reminder about where the responsibilities lie for setting policy and you know, this was outside of what I think we had determined.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem or Mr. Wilcoxon, anything to to add?
I just think we're jumping out of this procedural thing. You know, the rebuttal by staff is supposed to come and then general comments, but we've gotten those comments started already, so I'm ready to move on.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Crane, that there's no other questions for him. We'll go to the next step in the process.
All right, thank you.
Council, the next would be rebuttal by staff, file by final remarks, the petitioner, and then closing of hearing discussion motion. So now it is rebuttal of staff.
Okay, thank you, Council. What I'd like to state at the beginning of the process, when we set forth what would be the scoring mechanism, the rubric, staff was not aware that the state would not define what social equity was. So we stated that merely having a social equity permit from the state would make you eligible to apply for an application, I mean, for a permit here in Ypsilanti. So that's the first thing. When we did find out, I did talk with our city attorney because I was very concerned. One of the things that I had explored was just having a moratorium, returning all of the money, and then just not doing it until city council maybe defined what social equity was. Mr. Barr can attest that we had these conversations and that he also did some research to see what other cities had done. And so then when it came, because this was all after the fact. And so as Jennifer Simmons has already stated, that it's a council policy. If we would have anything that council would have done as well, would have been after the fact. Even if they made a definition, and we could still be here because it was not something that was stated at the beginning of the process. Unless we just it gave everybody their money back and started over. That's the only way, because council's decision or whatever would have been different, just as mine. So the ordinance says that I am the one to sign off on them. Make the decision, if I'm going to sign off on them, I want to do what is fair and equitable and what is social equity. And so that's when I made the decision that social equity was not based on finances. And I think I said that to Mr. Crane. By us using the rubric that we use for regular marijuana licenses does not differentiate the two. And that is the rubric that we used, and that is the rubric that council approved. However, I believe that council, just like myself, would not have approved that if they would have known that the state was not going to clearly define what social equity was. And that is my comment. Tried to do what was in the best interest of the city and in the spirit of the definition of social equity. Thank you. Thank you. Any other staff? I can't see everyone, so if you have your hand raised, staff, please just speak out. Okay, hearing none. I would just like to say that listening to a presentation on marijuana and with a good deal of that presentation being on social equity on last Friday. I think one thing, and I tried to back when we were passing our ordinance to get council to slow down so that we could know and we would understand, have an opportunity to understand all of the state's laws, because when we passed our ordinance, there there were still some tentative plans at the state. They did not, they had not solidified all of their requirements and answered all of their questions. And that was one of the things that the presenter said, and the presenter was the was the city attorney of Kalamazoo, and Kalamazoo was one of the cities that from the beginning opted to call a moratorium and not do pass anything until the state had completely solidified there what the laws would be. But coming out of that, in the session, it was definitely mentioned and that the state, the intention behind the law was that those people who had suffered unjustly or been imprisoned or harmed in any way by the former laws that the social justice, the equity was to be so that it would benefit them. And the discussion in the session also went to the fact that some of the financial requirements were such that the people that it was to benefit would not necessarily have all of the funds needed to do it. But I do believe that if we put out a send out a statement that we need to stand by our statement and not back up and make changes in the middle. So that's what I have to say on this. So, Mr. Hellinga, where do we go from here?
Next step is final remarks from petitioner, then closing of hearing, discussion, motion, and decision.
Okay, so the next step is close the discussion.
Our remarks of petitioner.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, Mr. Crane, do you have any, or your attorney have any closing remarks?
I I don't think I have anything else to add to this.
Just briefly, I want to thank everyone for their time and consideration. I know this is a tricky new area of the law and policy. And what I think would be in the best interest of the city is sticking by the published rubric, making sure that this is an open, transparent, fair process, giving people like Jesse, who's a good guy, who loves the city, who's going to do right by everybody, the opportunity to participate, especially when he was the number one point getter. We didn't come here trying to be adversarial. We came here to try to find a resolution. We don't want to cause problems for everybody else down the line. And we think the best way to do that is by awarding Jesse a permit so he can move forward, and so he can contribute and give back to the community and show everybody why he was the number one point getter. He really cares about this, and I know you all do as well. So I want to thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. So anything else from council, or do we need a motion, Mr. Wilcoxon? So anything else from counsel or do we need a motion, Mr. Wilcoxon?
I believe we're in the closing of the hearing and discussion. I just wanted to make comments. It's clear that, you know, the city manager had the best intentions in adding the 50-point additional rubric to make this conform to some, some sort of social equity that was not upheld by the state. When we were making our decisions going into this business, the state had preliminary set of conditions and those eventually went away. And that was not on our radar and we didn't take that up. And so that's, that's egg on our face. I, you know, I can appreciate where City Manager McMullin came from in trying to make, make something out of a bad situation. But I think the, the making of policy is very clear in the ordinance, saying that that is something that's determined by council. And what council determined, what council approved was a rubric that had 190 points, and I think that's what we need to go by. That being said, we need to go figure out this rubric after the fact and, and clearly define this or find some other solution to this so that in the future permit process, this doesn't come up. That's not something we need to do tonight, but that is something we need to do fairly soon. And with that, I moved to allow the appeal and direct staff to issue the permit and refund the fee.
It's been moved and supported that staff be instructed to issue the permit and refund the fee. Questions, discussion?
I just wanted to add, I want to thank counsel and the appellants for the comments that were made. And I too agree with a lot of things I've heard. And I am happy to work with staff and counsel going forward on a different rubric for social equity. I agree, we can't use the same rubric for both. And that's my comment, because we did, we used the same rubric that we use for regular.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Francis.
Counsel member Morgan. You're muted.
I want to apologize for the times that I may have misspoke. These are my final comments. This is what I think, no offense to lawyers or the law. I think the social equity program, the way it's worded or baseless words in particular order with vague deceptive meaning with extremely unclear directives. And I think about policy that we must follow is the difference between how it was written, what it means and how it's interpreted and enforced. Even in this case, in a social, in the social equity scoring rubric is meaningful only if interpreted within the true spirit of social equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge too, I mean, I don't think any of this is easy. It's all very new. We're trying to figure this out. So I understand that the staff and the city manager are trying to kind of figure out the best ways to go. You know, clearly we, we need to, you know, fix, fix this one and then, right, we can move forward in thinking, is there, do we need to make any changes? And I want to apologize to counsel member Morgan for my interruption earlier.
Okay, thank you. Anyone, Mr. Jones Chance?
If we create two new, well, let's say we create two new permits, what happens next year?
Mr. Barr.
Are we going to have new applicants? Are we going to have additional permits?
Well, I've thought about this question and the best I can offer counsel is if you allow the permits, allow the appeals and grant the permits, the ordinance still is limited to three, and so these would be non-conforming uses and would continue in that regard. Now, council could at a later date, if you wish, you can expand the number of permits or you can reduce them. But if you allow this appeal, this would be a permit outside the ordinance, so it would be a non-conforming use, in my opinion.
And does that mean that there would be a deadline on that? How long that permit would?
Well, the, the deadline, there's no deadline, but the permit would continue as long as the owner continued in, in that requirements of the permit.
Okay.
Yes, procedurally, is there a need to actually create an additional permit or do we just have to instruct? Okay.
The answer would be no, there's no need to change the ordinance at this time unless council wants to do that anyway.
Okay. And in that case, I think, I think that's all my questions.
All right, thank you. I certainly do believe that Mr. Craniac and the other appeal, one appealing deserve permits based on their scores. However, we have, we are four square miles. And to add two more permits, that means that we're increasing the density of marijuana facilities within our four square miles. Um, Mr. Barr, is there any way, what would happen if we repealed the permits that were granted?
Well, Your Honor, to answer the, the first part of your question, the permit process has several parts. One is whether or not the person has a permit, can grant a permit. And once the person has a permit, then they have to find a suitable place within the city to conduct the business. And the zoning ordinance in regard to adult businesses and in regard to marijuana and so on, for policy reasons, limits the places that the units can operate. For instance, they can only be within so many feet of a school and so on. And so to once the permit is granted, then the person still would have to follow the ordinance that the council has set up. And the second part of your question is what would happen if you changed the ordinance and reduced the number of permits? I think that was the question.
No, the question was that if we maintained what the ordinance said and kept the limit at three with no special uses.
Well, you can do that, but if you grant this permit, you're giving, you're giving a permit if you grant the appeal. And as I understand it, there's already three permits been granted already. Once, once the city takes action to grant a permit or a license, then there is a property right that attaches to that to the person that got the permit. And so you cannot take back the permit without some legal proceedings and you'd have to be like a condemnation proceeding. There would have to be fair compensation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Mayor Protem Brown, do you have any question or comment?
Some of my questions have been asked, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. So the next step, Mr. Helanga would be a motion.
There was already a motion made, now council needs to vote out that motion.
Okay, right, okay, I'm sorry, we are discussing, discussing the motion. Okay, thank you. Okay, anymore, if there's no more discussion, last chance for questions or discussion. Okay, seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
On the motion to allow the appeal and issue a permit and refund the fee for appeal, Mayor Protem Brown?
Yes.
Counsel member Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Counsel member Morgan?
Come back to me, please.
Counsel member Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Counsel member Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Counsel member Morgan?
No.
Motion carries with six yes, one no.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Craniac, for.
Yeah, I thank everybody for listening to this appeal. I very, I very much do appreciate it.
Well, thank you for, for bringing the appeal. We appreciate that. And appreciate you as a business owner in the city. And we do hope, or maybe I should just speak for myself, I do hope that things will be better and that next summer, there will not be street closures or street repair to interfere with your summer business. So thank you so much and thank you for your faithfulness to the city. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. You guys have a good evening. Thank you very much.
You too.
Thank you.
Counsel, moving on to the next item, the next appeal hearing is from AMA Operations LLC located at 212 North Lincoln Street. Denial letter was sent on June 29th, 2021. The appeal was received on July 29th, 2021 at 3:14 PM. And now it would be the time to call the case, mayor.
I would like to call the case. Thank you.
And I, I just provided a report of the staff and now would be petitioner's presentation.
Okay, is the petitioner here? Has he been promoted to panelist?
I'm not sure if Mr. Wahab has been promoted to a panelist yet, but please allow me to introduce myself. I'm Ari Goldstein here with my co-counsel Matt Daniels, representing AMA Operations.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wahab is on the call and wishes to be promoted to a speaker. I would request that he be so promoted at this time. Thank you. I would also like to request permission to share my screen. We prepared a, a brief PowerPoint as a kind of visual anchor to help focus some of the finer points of discussion, if everyone's comfortable with that.
You should be able to.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Alrighty. Okay, let's hope that this works as seamlessly as I intended to. Is everybody able to see this, this presentation?
Yes.
Fantastic. So again, just, again, thank you all for, for taking the time to hear our appeals this evening. Again, my name is Ari Goldstein here on behalf of AMA Operations. And the specific grounds for appeal that we wanted to address this evening, many of which have already been touched on, so I'll, I'll try to keep our remarks as, as brief as possible. We are contesting the unauthorized award of community benefits points, which, as noted, have not previously been contemplated or presented to or approved by council. We also, on a more specific level, would contest some of the points that were denied for a specific rubric component, such as the location of the parking lot, proximity to public transit. And, you know, in the alternative, we would also request that additional points be awarded to the applicant for the education section of the community benefits points in light of the scores they received for education-related components on the original scoring rubric. And finally, we are also objecting to the appeal fee, which we believe is contrary to the maximum amounts that municipalities are allowed to charge in application-related fees to applicants under the MRTMA. Just as a brief timeline to kind of help recap where we are and how we got to where we are today. As we understand it, in back in December 17th, 2019, an initial draft of the scoring rubric was presented for council to consider during a regular council meeting. There was a follow-up discussion about some of the proposed changes and to address some of the questions that were originally posed about the initial draft rubric during the January 14th regular city council meeting. From what we can tell in city council agenda packets and minutes, there was no further discussion about scoring rubrics or procedures for awarding or considering applications for social equity candidates until perhaps December 1st of 2020, when there was some additional discussion about consolidating chapters seven and eight of the city code, which had previously been separate for medical and adult use into a single unified chapter on marijuana licenses and applications. That brings us straightforward to the initial application submission from our clients in March of 2021, which was followed by their denial letter in end of June. And the community benefits points and aggregated scoring results were ultimately posted, as far as we can tell, for the first time on July 26th of this year. The, here, here, we have a picture of the original denial letter, which was included in the application, or sorry, the appeal material as an exhibit. And I do want to just call attention to the language here at, at the bottom of this. Just trying to consolidate this so it doesn't block my view of it. There we go. Okay. Pointing to specifically to this language at the end, issuance of permits is not on a first come, first served basis nor lottery permits. And this is very clear and unambiguous, permits will be issued on a point system to be determined by council with the aid of staff. So a couple of critical points here, permits will be issued on a point system. The ordinance language here does not contemplate any other evaluative criteria. There's a well-established canon of, of interpretation in the legal world known as expressio unius, which would direct us to read this as taking the one referenced evaluative criteria as the sole evaluative criteria, since absent other, the mention of other potential evaluative criteria, there's no way that anybody could have been aware of them. Additionally, the language here also very clearly tasked council with determining what evaluative criteria will comprise this point system. So it's very clear from the ordinance, we feel that there's only one evaluative criteria, and that's your score on the point system, which was presented to council and we believe approved by council in January of 2020. That, that same interpretation is also reflected consistently in the instructions and commentary that was provided at the top of the original scoring rubric as presented in the original application packet. Zooming in on that language for ease of reference here, we notice some other, the same kind of reflect, the same kind of interpretation we were just discussing a moment ago. It says very clearly, selection committees will rely on a weighted scoring rubric to evaluate each application. And this is text that's, you know, placed directly above a sample scoring rubric. The total possible number of points for an individual application is 190. When scored, the applications will be ranked highest to lowest, with highest being the first license issued. There's no contemplation of anything but the 190 points, not 240 points as the total points possible ultimately became after the community benefits points were introduced. And nothing here indicating that there would be supplemental scoring after the initial provisional scores on the, the rubric were, were made by the selection committee. So accordingly, you can imagine we were all pretty surprised when the score results were ultimately published on the city website at the end of July, and they included not just the 190 point, the scores out of 190 points contemplated in the original rubric, but added this additional 50 points possible for community benefits, which was a new evaluative criteria that our clients and the other appellants, as noted, have, were totally unaware of prior to receiving this aggregated score report. We promptly reached out to the city council, or sorry, the city clerk's office, to request a copy of the disaggregated score report for our client. But despite the language here that indicated that redacted forms of all applications would be posted on the city's website for transparency, to the best of our knowledge, that has not occurred yet, we were still directed to request the disaggregated report via FOIA. While waiting for that FOIA report to come through, we, our client had been in contact with other appellants, who, as noted, had received communications from the city manager, where it was indicated that the rubric was one factor, but not the sole determinant for granting a social equity permit. Email goes on to identify the categories that we would ultimately learn were considered in making those community benefit point determinations. But critically, the email also indicated that it is the city's position, at least, that since the ordinance does not state that the published point system would contain all factors to be scored or that it would be the sole determinant of the decision process, it was permissible legally to introduce additional evaluative criteria in the form of the community benefits points. As previously noted, it's our position that the ordinance language is unambiguous and unambiguously indicates. and unambiguously indicates that there is but one evaluative criteria in play here, namely the scoring rubric that was approved by council back in January of twenty twenty. Um, yeah, let's see here. Yes. And more, more disturbingly to us, the uh, supplemental scoring as reported by the city clerk uh, was never brought to the council for consideration or approval, making the addition of it totally uh, exposed. We do understand that there's also some additional provisions around social equity in the uh, ordinance. But to the best of our knowledge, the permit process that's contemplated here is the set aside of three retail licenses that are designated solely for uh, applicants who qualify under the state's definition of a social equity applicant. And there we have the uh, disaggregated score report. Again, none of these crit- criteria or categories were introduced prior to our receipt of this email. And the, the points ended up being outcome determinative for four of the six applicants. Here on the left, we have the original rubric, the original rankings as they would have uh, come out from the original scoring of the official rubric. And on the right, we have the scores after the supplemental scoring by the city manager was taken into account. And as you can see here, this ends up moving our client, who was the second ranked uh, applicant of the original scoring rubric down to fourth place. It moved uh, Luna Bloom, who was originally the lowest scoring applicant up to third place, making it eligible to receive a permit. Wellflower from fifth to second and Ipsy Worst from first down to fifth, making it ineligible. Uh, just very quickly, I think we covered the bulk of the points we wanted to make, but insofar as the uh, rubric did award points for having a parking lot located behind the building, we would suggest that the notion of being located behind the building as an inherently directionally relative concept is not uh, cannot reasonably be applied since there's no, you know, we, we know what's behind something, you'd have to know what the official front is. And without further clarification on that, we would contest that they are least eligible for partial points here. They similarly lost five points for not being within two hundred feet of a transit stop. We feel that given their proximity to uh, readily accessible public transit that wouldn't require any crossing of major roads and is still readily accessible from the business, additional partial credit would be due here as well. Uh, and failing any of those arguments, we also think that uh, since they received a zero on the original education category of the community benefit scoring, though we still don't understand what uh, the evaluative criteria for that was. Uh, since they did receive the points possible on the scoring rubric for the other education related functions, we would contend that, you know, they are also eligible for at least partial credit in this category. And since they have only lost to the current uh, fourth play, third place finisher by one point, granting partial credit on any of these areas would be sufficient to create a tie or to displace the current third place finisher. Uh, just as a kind of concluding remark, I think we've already foreshadowed our position here, but in the MRTMA, it does explicitly cap the amount that municipality can charge for non-refundable application fees at five thousand dollars. And the point of that five thousand dollar application fee is to defray application administrative and enforcement costs associated with implementing that process. Uh, we firmly believe that the eleven hundred dollar appeal fee is violative of the statutory cap imposed by the MRTMA and would respectfully request that uh, that be refunded. Uh, I think this has also been covered, but there's been substantial amounts of litigation uh, that have resulted, that has resulted out of controversies arising from marijuana ordinances. And we firmly, you know, do not want to see Ypsilanti added to this list. But you know, we, we do believe that uh, the process here uh, implicates potential causes of action under the Open Meetings Act. There are clear issues of substantive and procedural due process. And if we were forced to take this to court, we would be seeking, you know, to enjoin all further proceedings pertaining to the issuance of permits uh, and all other appropriate equitable relief. And uh, at that, I guess I'll save concluding remarks for the end, but uh, we are happy to take questions at this time.
And we just want to introduce ourselves, Mohammed and Ali Wahab. Uh, we're having technical difficulties. I can't get the camera to turn on, but uh, you know, we come in peace for the most part. We just want a fair process. That's all we're asking for. And I hope uh, that's the resolution here, you know. We, we've been business owners in the city of Ypsilanti, my, my, you know, for twenty, twenty-five years. And we've been uh, you know, we abide by the law, we do the right things and it's just, I felt like this was not a fair process, you know, it just wasn't. You can't draw everything out in front of you and then in the end, just change the rules of the game, you know, it's just, it, it, it kind of wa- was unfair and we're hoping for a fair outcome here, like we said. And uh, that's all we have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Wahab, and thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Um, counsel, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Halinga, would you take us to the next step in the process, please?
Uh, counsel, the next step would be uh, rebuttal of staff.
I day. I basically don't have a rebuttal. Um, it's pretty much the same as stated in the previous case. Um, however, um, it does state in the ordinance that the city manager or designee may deny any application that doesn't follow law or the ordinance. And I do believe that they followed what was set out, but I, I I looked at all of these and so I did have some issues regarding the actual final scores and staff would tell you, but I elected not to bother them. And I elected to leave them as they were. In some cases, we found that some people ma- got additional points, maybe that they did not deserve after, you know, we went through them, but I did not um, bother them. I just left them as they were. So there were, the system, I mean, it was definitely flawed and we're, we're all human for scoring. So there were still a lot of questions. I want clear because we focused a lot on the rubrics and the scoring. And I think if we made adjustments according to um, what was correct, some of those scores would not be as high um, as they seem or I stated. One of the things um, with this one that, that stuck out with me the most was the residency requirement, which I, I really didn't see anything in my um, report, but the, the, the license said that the owner um, had a license and that they had gotten it two months before. So I was not sure that this person had actually been a resident for five years, but because they had the state permit, um, you know, I just didn't go into that. So I guess I, because at whatever the state fires were. Um, so I guess the time to make that uh, question or to be questioned that would have been when the application was received. However, I was not involved in that part. I'm, I was only involved at the end part. So um, I wish we had a whole bunch of uh, had more permits to issue. But again, as I said, I did what I felt was the best interest of the city and following um, the definition that had been stated previously of what we felt social, well, what the state intended for social equity to be. Um, and that was not the case um, after we had already began our process. And so it was kind of like too late. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, next uh, step would be final remarks of petitioner.
I'm, would you repeat that, please?
Next uh, step would be final remarks of petitioner.
Okay.
I'll just uh, very quickly note that uh, you know, the scores provided were the scores provided and uh, on those scores AMA received the second highest score, making it eligible to receive a permit. Uh, they received fourteen out of fifteen possible points on their volunteerism plan, which committed some three hundred thousand dollars of resources to the local community. And they are a very well-qualified applicant to operate the proposed establishment.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Anything from counsel? Mr. Wilcoxen.
Um, this pretty much falls along the same lines as the other one um, as the previous case. So with that, I move to allow to the, the appeal and direct staff to issue the permits and uh, refund the fee.
It's been moved and supported to issue the permit and refund the fee. Are there any questions or comments, discussion on that motion from counsel? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Halinga, would you call the role, please?
Member Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
The six yes and one no, the motion carries.
We thank you. Uh, Mr. Wahab, I do apology. I, on behalf of council, I do apologize for um, the uh, the situation arising and being what it was. We do uh, welcome you to um, do business here in the city. And uh, we hope that you will um, continue to be a good business owner and a good resident and a good contributor to the city. We thank you and uh, sorry that your camera's not working, but you know, technology's nice, but it does have.
I don't do many, many of these uh, Zoom calls, so I, I got on my laptop and it's, it's not clicking on for me, but I apologize for that. Thank you for the, you know, the resolution is acceptable to us and we appreciate your guys' uh, understanding and, you know. That's all we have to say.
Great, thank you and have a fantastic rest of the evening. The same to you, Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Next, Mr. Halinga. You're muted. You're muted.
The next item on the agenda mayor need to offer is Tama Ventures, if you like to call that case.
We call the case. Please come forward.
Uh, the staff report is Tama Ventures, an applicant and repellent from nine one five West Michigan Avenue. Denial letter was sent on June twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. Appeal received on July twenty ninth, twenty twenty one at three thirty four PM.
Good evening, counsel and staff. This is. I'm sorry.
Falcons.
Good, good evening, Mr. Alan Richardson. Um, I'm also having some issues with my video, but if it's okay with you, I'll proceed uh, with oral argument. Um, the applicant themselves is also here on a call and I requested to be promoted to a participant at this time. I don't want to go through some of the, the global issues that have been raised. I think that those have been laid out.
What was your applicant's name again, so I can promote them?
It's uh, Mike, the, the individual who's lost and chose Michael Awada for. May I proceed?
Yes, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, like I was saying, some of the, the global issues as it relates to the community benefits plan or the application or I'm sorry, the appeal fee of eleven hundred dollars that has been raised and discussed ad nauseam, that was included in our appeal as well. I'm not going to cover those issues. I think counsel and staff are well aware of the the problems that are posed uh, by the community benefits additional points. Tama Ventures um, in the original application scored as number four. However, there are a variety of rubric categories that were erroneously scored and the applicant feels strongly that they should be awarded those points. Quickly, before I get into that though, I just wanted to touch on uh, the global resolution that Mr. Schwartz put forward before, and we have the same hope. There have been two additional permits that have been awarded. And I would note that if Tama Ventures' appeal is also granted, all three of those who lost in the initial application process, if they were awarded a license, would still all meet the five hundred foot buffer requirement for a retailer to retailer. And I think that's important for the council to know. And so we would request that the appeal be granted and uh, all issues can be resolved by way of doing so for all three applicants who were not successful initially. As it relates to the particular points that the applicant is contesting, um, they are set forth as followed, which was contained in our appeal papers. First of all, although the applicant is not contesting that the parking lot is located behind the building, um, which was worth one point, the applicant does contest that the application of such a, a rubric category is in conflict with the statutory requirements pertaining to a competitive application under BERTMA. Um, specifically, the points that were deducted that the applicant is contesting uh, first and foremost is that they demonstrate a history of operating a business for more than five years. Um, in applicant's application, it showed on the resume that applicant owned and operated Queso Mexican Grill for a period of time. Uh, we have made the inference that they were not awarded the additional points for the five-year requirement, although it did state and set forth that the applicant managed and operated a subway restaurant for some period of time. Um, in the appeal, we submitted K one uh, tax documents to show distribution of profit for that particular entity because in fact, the applicant was an owner or partial owner of that subway restaurant. They clearly meet the five-year requirement and they have far more than five years experience of owning and operating a business. The next uh, point category that applicant is contesting is in section seven A of the scoring rubric that there will be a twenty-five percent increase in landscaping beyond the minimum land requirement in the zoning ordinance. And out of the two points, the applicant receives zero points. However, uh, specifically on page one hundred and eighty-two of the application, there is an attestation by the applicant that they will commit to complying with this requirement and that over twenty-five percent of the minimum standard set forth in the zoning ordinance will be landscaped. In addition to that attestation, the applicant did render in its proposed retail facility and that demonstrates and depicts sufficient landscape to be awarded these particular points. Uh, along the same lines, in Rubric four in section nine A, under area impact, the applicant was not awarded the three points regarding the ability of the establishment to hold and treat at least twenty percent more stormwater than is the required minimum through rain gardens, underground basins, or other methods approved by the city department of public works. Again, specifically on page one hundred and eighty-two of the application, the applicant states that his plans and renderings for this facility include a rooftop garden, which will collect rainwater exceeding the required minimum by twenty percent. Uh, particular sections of other ordinances in the Ypsilanti code of ordinances were also cited, specifically section one two two dash six three nine, which states that vegetative roof systems are permitted in all districts in accordance with the building code. Um, so we believe strongly that the applicant attested to and demonstrated compliance with that commitment and therefore should have that gained those points. And then lastly, out of the fifteen points available to applicant in the volunteerism plan, only nine points were awarded. The uh, denial letter in the, the ultimate. The uh, denial letter in the the ultimate scoring outcome did not necessarily delineate where the applicant won and lost points in the volunteerism plan. Uh, there were various categories set forth that were called for, which included voluntary commitments to the city, voluntary activities, and voluntary improvements to both their facility or proposed establishments, as well as other uh, establishments and businesses in the area. One thing that Tom Ventures did do before it submitted its application was held a virtual town hall meeting. And they did that because they wanted to connect with the residents and business owners of the city to understand what their concerns might be about this potential operation, but also to learn about what the concerns were of the city in terms of what was most needed for revitalization effort. And they took those considerations into account and committed to those things in their application. Um, so we feel strongly that there were points that were not awarded that should have been awarded. But globally, we feel that there was um, you know, an issue with the community benefits, fifty point scoring allocation and that this appeal can be satisfied by granting Tama Ventures a permit. I would like to add, I know it's a very onerous process to um, draft and develop and implement an ordinance in the overall regulatory framework to allow for these businesses to operate, so I do appreciate the time and effort that counsel and staff has taken to go forward with this process. We hope for an amicable resolution and not necessarily having to uh, go further to judicial review, but my client will uh, seek to protect its rights because it does feel it was wronged in this application process, doesn't feel that it was fair and does feel that it was deserving of a permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Would your client like to speak?
Yes, good evening, members of committee and city council members, this is Tara Kawata here. I just uh, want to first and foremost, thank you for giving participants like myself uh, who come from disapprobational uh, impacted communities, the opportunity to 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 really get into something that's becoming a pretty big boom in your city. Um, I'd also like to add that, you know, although uh, exactly what Nick has just said, we attested to a lot of the improvements we were gonna do to the property. Um, you know, our landlord Calvin West is very supportive, we've even gone so far as getting the support of of a pastor locally. Uh, is very supportive of our security plan and what we intend to do with the property. The property is uh, as you can see, you know, from driving down uh, the corridor on Michigan Avenue there, if you had the opportunity to drive by it, is in pretty rough shape. And we plan on investing north of five hundred thousand dollars in improvements into that property. Um, you know, we we had, when we were doing our community outreach event, uh, we had a couple uh, of individuals, actually, one that resonated with me was a lady and her husband walked their dog, and we talked to them about what we were doing. And they were ecstatic, they said this building has been kind of condemned for over fifteen or twenty years now, and we're happy to see some development start to come on this part of town. Um, so with that, I'd I'd leave it to the to the committee here, but uh, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be able to participate in such a such a great uh, opportunity.
Thank you. Does staff have any questions or comments that they would like to make?
Uh, yes, I'd like to state that um, I think uh, this up that is basically appealing the rubric itself, the original rubric, and has and has stated, excuse me, very well that even without the additional scoring, you know, they would still be in the same the same ranking. I reviewed it as I, as I did the others. And um, I felt that it was in just, and it just didn't rise to the top. Um, so there are basically based on the original rubric in, and I guess the um, additional one could have put them up over the top is what they're saying, but things like location and even crime in the area, those kind of things, I looked at what was the best interest of the city. So either way it goes, this applicant uh, was still low in the and it's up to counsel to decide what you like to do with this matter.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from counsel? Mr. Morgan.
This is my final comment for the evening, uh, I want to thank every, all the those who appealed, um, thank you for presenting to counsel, um. I do believe, um, I agree with my colleagues, um, that we should uphold what was written. I am saddened, I'm not interested at all in adding more applications or more permits to our city, um, I don't like the impact of what it's doing, I'm not interested in the money. I think the money doesn't say it all, um, I think the long term effects we're gonna notice some in time. I think the marijuana industry, we can't stop it, it's too big, and I'm not trying to stop it, I just think that um, if we don't adhere to the social equity program and what it could mean, it's gonna perpetuate exactly what the medical and the recreational uh, the overarching problem with it throughout the nation is who it benefits and who it doesn't. And our city is perpetuating that same thing and it's uh, sad, it's sad. So thank you for everyone who does it, who uh, who had appealed, I appreciate your business here in the city. Um, I I don't agree with all businesses in the city, but we do want people to still um, come to our town and have a good time. So I appreciate the business owners, I'm not a fan of the industry of marijuana, especially the impact of it, I just want to state that for the record, but I will, I don't mean to be divisive with the will of counsel, my colleagues, uh, this is a personal choice, and I do believe we should uphold um, what was written, since that's what the policy and the law states. But I think it's slippery, and I do think the social equity program is a farce overall, no, no further.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Morgan. Uh, Mr. Wilcoxen, I believe I saw your hand up.
Hey, Mayor, um, I'm just a little confused where we are. I didn't ask questions of petitioners, but um, I was looking at the the property at nine fifteen and I'm not uh, quite sure which property that is. Whether that's the the old flower shop there next to the chicken place or what building are we talking about?
Wait, do you want, do you want to chime in here?
Staff, what building is nine fifteen?
Thank you. Building nine fifteen is next to um, the old, what I understand is a a chicken joint.
Okay, so it's the.
It's at the corner.
It's it's the. Yeah, it's the entire parcel there on First and Michigan.
Oh, okay, because that was listed as nine thirteen and then you've got an intersection, I don't know how that happened, but anyway, Google Maps is valuable too.
Right.
All right, I I I'm not clear on that building, how are you gonna do rooftop uh, uh, gardens that, you know, I I look, I looked at the diagrams in the in the petition, but I don't, you know, unless you're doing a a different roof or something like that, it just doesn't seem to align itself to that right now.
That's correct, we are doing, we are doing a different roof, it's gonna be a flat roof along with solar and a rooftop garden.
Okay, so significant, significant renovations are planned.
A- absolutely, a- and the building is, as you can see, uh, pretty distressed. Um, I would say even more distressed than some of those buildings that were awarded uh, points in the discretionary rubric um, that uh, were awarded significant points for for being blighted. Um, so, you know, that's one one last coming out add.
Is that it, Mr. Wilcoxen?
Um, yeah, for now.
Okay, I would like to ask staff to please um, check the, you would check our records, because I do believe that that particular uh, parcel, that not whole nine hundred block was excluded from any marijuana businesses when we first began looking at this. So if you would look at, if you would staff, if you would go back and um, please check that out, you know, um, you know, I'm sure the, I'm sure he has. I'm sure he has grounds for appeal, but that particular location brings up a question in my mind. Mr. Hilinga, you were saying something?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Myers might be able to answer this better, but I'm fairly certain that 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 block is permissible by Zeller.
There is a church right next door to that lot, to that property.
That that's correct, Mayor, um, we do not have anything in our ordinance uh, that indicates feet from a church, and that zoning district is general corridor. And general corridor does allow for uh, marijuana dispensaries and uh, uh, provisioning centers and retail centers.
I, I remember, uh, I remember discussion about that because of the the location across the street from the housing project. Uh, it was, it was exempt, and I know that counsel voted on that um, and excluded that, uh, I think Ms. Westler was handling was uh, a part of that, handling the that particular subject when counsel voted on it. And so I do question that particular location, and I I stand on the question of that. I I I do believe that we need to, that needs to be uh, searched out.
If I may, quickly, um.
Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, thank you. The applicant um, did provide a zoning assurance letter to show that it was eligible. And also, um, just to be a good potential neighbor, the applicant did discuss with and in conjunction with its appeal, submit a letter uh, from the pastor of the church which favored the applicant's proposed business. So all neighboring businesses were approached, were um, engaged. And in particular, with regard to the church, the uh, the pastor was kind enough to put his approval in writing, which was submitted with the application.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you.
I appreciate, you know, you having the letter from the pastor, but I still would like for staff to research that because there was definitely uh, a a vote in council. I don't know, the only other person that might have been on council at that time would have been Mayor Pro Tem Brown, possibly. But we did vote on that excluding that um, that lot, that that area, that building, from the ordinance because of the location of the uh, housing project. So staff, would you please search it out?
Yeah, I believe that was before my time, actually.
Does it? Okay. Okay. It might take some time to find that, but it was there, Mr. Myers.
I I know that Councilwoman Somerville had had her hand up, but I I will say that our zoning.
Okay, I can't, uh, Mr. Hilinga, would you please uh, promote uh, Councilmember Summer Hill to um.
Councilmember Somerville, she's embarrassed.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Somerville, I couldn't see you.
Oh, okay, just to answer your question, it's not in our zoning ordinance, our ordinance. Um, I just wanted to comment, I I'm a little confused at how the scoring for this one played out. Um, just based on the fact that it is a blighted building and the changes would improve the area and provide like, security cameras um, to that building. That's just kind of a red flag for me, um. It just seems, I I I don't get that, but um, yeah, I'm I'm gonna support this appeal, actually, I think it, we need to promote developing undeveloped spaces in our city, and and there is a lot of crime across the street at that liquor store. Um, so it would actually be really nice to have another active space um, that has people there and also cameras and a building that's cleaned up. Um, it's proven that developing areas reduces crime.
Are you moving?
Mr. Myers.
Um, so if if the zoning amendment happened prior to Mayor Pro Tem's time, our zoning ordinance was drastically rewritten in twenty fourteen. And so my guess is that if there was something in the zoning ordinance that happened in our previous zoning ordinance, and that did not carry through to this existing zoning ordinance, because the applicant did uh, receive assurances from the planning department that this was an acceptable uh, location based on our current zoning ordinance.
I will support the appeal because of the um, because of what happened, because of the change of um, in the system in the mid, in midstream. But I still question um, that locat- location, and will continue to question it, so, okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments from counsel? Mr. Wilcoxen.
Um, since we've kind of moved around in the process here, I'm assuming we're at the closing part?
Yes.
Okay, then then I will move to allow the appeal and direct staff to issue the permit and refund the fee.
For it.
It's been moved and supported. Um, any question or discussion with, from counsel? On that issue, on the motion? Mr. Wilcoxen.
Um, you know, as as the attorney said, this is, this is not as clear cut a case. Um, you know, this is, you know, based on the merits of the rubric itself, um, and that interpretation and scoring. Um, this is the 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 one application that was not flipped. Um, this, you know, even with the original rub- rubric, the scoring was such that they wouldn't have gotten the permit. Um, but with their claims on on the points that they were denied, um, that's a little less clear to me, but um, I think, going through this anyway, so.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Jones. Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see your hand.
No, it's okay, I turned my camera off because I was trying to fix my hair, um, I just wanted to actually, no, I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Simmons or Mr. Jones Chance? Mayor Pro Tem? Okay, seeing and hearing none, um, and Mr. Morgan said he has his last say. Would you call the roll, please, Mr. Hilinga?
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown? Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes, one no.
Thank you. Thanks, counsel, thanks, uh, Mr. Hawkins and Mr. Awadi, am I pronouncing your name correct?
That's close enough, I've been called worse.
No, would you say it so that I can get it correct, please?
Awada.
Awada, okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much, and um, I think that brings us to an of the close of, or near the close of our meeting. Um, thank you once again for following through on your uh, application and um, appreciate you being, your business being in the city, thank you. Mr. Hilinga.
Also, next item on the agenda is the adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
For.
It has been properly moved and second to adjourn, all in favor? It has been properly moved and second to adjourn, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, folks.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Hello?
Hey, Councilmember uh, Morgan, I want you to know that I echo and agree with your sentiments. However, I knew I did not want the city, um, I did not want the city to be sued and the, the city, if the thing ended was that whichever way.